If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Goodbye, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Grand List. Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Fosson.
Yep.
Hildebrand.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change. We've had a request to remove item number 10 from consent to the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, then I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda with one change, and that is a request to move item number 37 on the regular agenda to the first item prior to the public hearings.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that then brings us first to what is number 37 on your regular agenda, and I would look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement with the State of Nebraska Department of Natural Resources for a grant in the amount of $2 million to help fund projects in Johnson Park. Motion in second, and for some discussion on this, we'll hear from Nate Powell, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Mayor and council, thank you. What we have here in front of you is, this is an agreement with the Nebraska Department of Natural Resources, part of the State of Nebraska Rescue Plan Act funds of 2021. This grant does not, didn't require an application process or there was no matching funds required for this grant. This was a result of efforts by the mayor and Senator Dover, who's here as well tonight, and they can speak to that process, and I wasn't part of that process, but they can speak to that. The funds will be for the Johnson Park project, and this kind of gets us over the finish line for all the projects, and any overages that we've had, you know, higher costs from bidding and things that have come in, we'll be able to cover all that with these funds. And in the grant, it'll fund 265,000 towards the ice rink, 425,000 towards the splash pad, 475,000 towards the pedestrian bridge, 60,000 for wayfinding signs, 50,000 for landscaping, 325,000 for a nature playground, 100,000 for gatehouse improvements, 300,000 for a concession stand and second restroom near the playground and the sport court, and that's a total of $2 million towards the project. Staff recommends your approval of the agreement. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nate, for that explanation. I do see that we have Senator Dover here tonight, so if he is wanting to come forward to talk about the process in which this appropriations was made at the State of Nebraska, you're welcome to. Good evening.
Evening. I want to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak this evening. Norfolk, Nebraska, this community is my home. When I think about the future, I would hope that Norfolk would have three things: growth, life, and prosperity. These three elements are realized when we have a city that attracts young people. This challenge faces all communities across the state and Nebraska as a whole. A city needs a place for young people to meet, to have fun, to get to know each other, and to hopefully find their special someone so they can settle down and grow deep roots in this community as my family has as well as yours. We are sixth-generation Nebraska home-sitters, fourth-generation Norfolkans. That's the hope and promise that Johnson Park, our downtown, and Norfolk as a whole holds to me and my family. Who of you don't hope that your grandchildren will find an opportunity to work in the field of their choice here in Norfolk? It's about the future of Norfolk, the future of Northeast Nebraska, and ultimately, the future of our entire state. That's why I fought to get funding that needed to finish the project, but I didn't do it alone. When I was first appointed to Appropriations Committee, I was inexperienced, but I knew that some of the ARPA monies may need to be re-appropriated. I reached out to Mayor Moaning and asked for a couple of projects that need funding that would qualify for ARPA funds. Mayor Moaning suggested the Salvation Army Project and Johnson Park. I drafted two shell bills just in case funds became available. The Salvation Army Project received grants, so it did need the funding, and that will be another great addition, not only to Norfolk, but to Northeast Nebraska. Mayor Moaning arranged for a presentation for my Johnson Bill, Johnson Park bill introduction. You should all be very proud of the presenters. They did a fantastic job: Mayor Moaning, Tracy Jeffries, and Angie Stinger. Without all of us working together, we may not have been able to complete the project. Norfolk is on the verge of becoming so much than it's ever been. I have friends who have come up to Omaha and Lincoln and enjoy the downtown restaurants and spend the night. Who would have thought people from Omaha spending the weekend in Norfolk? For once, they're hoping to offset our tax base. When I met the managers, employees of Nucor, Cold Finish, and Volcraft, those who are not from Norfolk tell me they have been in many towns, but none have what Norfolk has to offer. This didn't happen by accident. It took a lot of people working together. It took people like Stan Staub, former mayor Jim Miller, Joe Ferguson, and Darryl Nabachek, who looked at the Norfolk River and saw a river walk. It takes the city council, who's willing to invest in our future, and be willing to take the heat that sometimes come with making decisions that results in our community's long-term growth. Just like a business, the success of our community will be based on investing in our future. Some might say this is a waste of money. I strongly disagree. I'm sure many of you have heard the same thing. I've talked to past mayors, and they said they used to pride themselves on being near the lowest tax rate in the state, but after looking back, they tell me it was a mistake because all they did was saddle the town with deferred maintenance and streets that needed replaced, and you're dealing with that today. In ending, I want to congratulate you all on this project and other projects over the years. I want to thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and your perseverance. And to those who come here on a regular basis and point fingers accusing the council of being reckless, do not let them get to you. Instead, go downtown, have a beer, have a nice meal with your family, take a walk in the park, listen to the vibe there, the vibe of people laughing and living, the kind of vibe that attracts young people. I can't remember a time when the downtown was so vibrant, and I know it is there because of people like you who are here willing to make it happen. Again, some can come and criticize, but all I say is drive around town and see what's happening. Talk is cheap, but the proof of our community's bright future is shining around all over town. Thanks again for all of you serving in the city council. I want, and, well, I guess actually I just want to, I'm going to break from this. I want to thank the city also. I've been here for quite a few years, and it's tough being your job. How many phone calls do you receive? You know, this and that, and the city, I mean, what they go through, and the accused, I mean, the accusations that people make. You know, I just want to, again, to say thank you and thank the city for all that you do. I don't think anyone really knows what it's like until they sit in your chair, so thank you.
Thank you, Senator. If you wouldn't mind for just a second, because I have a couple of questions, we'll add a little context to the process here for the record. But first, I want to thank you for being here tonight. I know you have a commitment this evening, which is why we tried to accommodate your schedule, but moving this first, so thank you for being here. Secondly, thank you for your work and advocacy on behalf of not only Norfolk, but Madison County and District 19 in Lincoln. We know that that is not an easy job either, especially in the environment we're in, but I saw you work very hard for the people in Norfolk in your first year, and that's provided a lot of benefit for us, so thank you for your advocacy and your time and energy on our behalf. But to talk about this project in particular in the public process, we saw, so as was mentioned with the agenda item, this is an agreement with the state, specifically the Department of Natural Resources, for monies that were available as part of ARPA dollars, federal ARPA dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay, and in the instance of the state finding places to plug into projects that had to do with water quality or quantity or water recreation, there are several. I mean, this was not the only project of its kind. In fact, can you talk a little bit about the vehicle in which this was approved as part of the appropriations process? This agreement came in conjunction with also another water-related request from the city of Lincoln as well, correct?
I don't know how deep you want me to get into the weeds, but the ARPA money was appropriated, and of course, everyone's after that money. I don't necessarily believe that what the federal government did, the amount of money they gave the states for ARPA money, but it's there, and someone's going to need to spend that money. And I think my responsibility is to get and help our, help our district, help our community. Initially, the money was appropriated, actually, a lot of it to North Omaha, and there was some concern that they were not going to be able to handle probably the technicalities of what the federal government's going to require in paperwork. And so there was a feeling that, and that was quite a, that was hundreds of millions of dollars. So there was a good feeling there was, there was going to be money available, and everyone was, of course, I mean, you know how it goes. Everybody's after the money because they want to help their community. Eventually, $180 million was taken from North Omaha and appropriated to Lincoln's water project. I think it's going to be like 1 billion, 1.2 billion dollars, and they received 180 million. I worked with Anna Wishart and Eli Boestar, and they were willing to work with me and actually take 2 million of the 180 million dollars and vote to appropriate that here to Norfolk.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out because it's not unique in the last couple of years that ARPA, federal ARPA dollars have been appropriated to water-related projects, whether it's the canal project out west, or the design process for a lake water recreation project between Oman-Lincoln or in the Ashland area, or the Lincoln Second Water Source project, or this one, the state is.
Like on Marina?
Yes, yes.
Lake McConaughey.
Absolutely. So this is another in those types of projects, and again, we appreciate your advocacy. And when you had initially reached out looking for shovel-ready projects, so to speak, this one and the Salvation Army Project came about because a lot of that groundwork had been done, and I will add, in terms of Johnson Park, these are, this money will help us finalize projects that were already planned, but probably not obtainable, at least in early phases of construction because of cost inflation and the pause that the fundraising team around Johnson Park had to do because of COVID, and again, that was a justification for other ARPA-related projects receiving money from the state. So just wanted to point that out as those were factors in the process here of how this all happened.
I guess one thing I'll add to this, since we're all here together, there will be reappropriation of other ARPA funds, and I do talk to every time, whether I'm talking to Nucor or Action Council or those kinds, I'm simply saying, if you're aware of a good opportunity for our community, please reach out to me. I'm not saying that we can do that, but I'm currently working with Northeast Community College and some other projects around the community, and again, I think as Mayor Moaning pointed out, it needs to be shovel-ready, it needs to be appropriated by the end of 2024 and completed by the end of 2026. So obviously, that limits in some cases. I mean, Shane knows about construction, how long it takes to get the project running and completed, right? But again, I just want to say thank you to all of you, because I know it's, I know it's a tough job, and no one, no one really gets it unless you're sitting up there. And I want to thank the city because that's a tough job. Economic development has been, has come up here recently. It's just tough, but again, it's because of people like you that are willing to sit here this evening and take the phone calls throughout the week and have meetings, et cetera, that make this happen in Norfolk. So I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Senator, and we appreciate the kind words regarding strategic investments and the results. Are there any questions or discussion, council? Any public input? Okay, if no questions or further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, that then takes us to the beginning of the series of public hearings under public hearings and related action on your council agenda, starting with item number 23. I will open this public hearing to consider a request from Garth and Krista Ferris to consider a zoning change from R2, one- and two-family residential district, to R1, single-family residential district on property addressed as 221 Jackson Avenue.
Do, just a quick question. Do we go to number 10 first?
That will, that goes to the regular, the beginning of the regular agenda, so we will, we will complete the public hearings first. So to kick off discussion on this public hearing, we'll hear first from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. I've brought this up so that hopefully this helps a little bit. The R2 that you see kind of in the center bottom screen, that is the piece of property we're looking at. That was recently changed from R1 to R2 here a few years ago when the builder of that lot was considering putting a duplex on there and then decided to do a single-family instead, so they do not need the R2 any longer. And why we're here is, you'll see after the zone change public hearing, if this passes on all three readings, there is a plat that follows this, that they are replanting and adding some of this next-door lot to the east to the 221 Jackson. If there's any questions.
So why do they want to move it from R2 to R1?
So we don't have two zonings on one lot once the plat is made.
Oh, so once that line is drawn again, the other, they wouldn't just assume the R2?
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions for Val? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no, no one, I'll ask for Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 8, 2023, at the request of Garth and Krista Ferris to consider a zoning change from R2, one- and two-family residential district, to R1, single-family residential district, on property addressed as 221 Jackson Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a six-to-zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 24. Looking for a motion to consider ordinance number 5841 approving a zone change from R2 to R1 on property addressed as 221 Jackson Avenue.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number 5841.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Public input? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5841 carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition, I'll make a motion to move on second and third.
Second.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5841 carries on second and third.
Takes us to item 25. I would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-48 approving the final plat of Ferris' guilty addition.
I'll make a motion of consideration of resolution number 2023-48. Second.
Motion in second. Val, anything to add to this?
Nope, I just brought it up so that you can see that that center lot line shifted to the east.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments or discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-48 is adopted.
Item 26. Open this public hearing to consider a request from Roger L. Bader Kirk M. Bader and Jackie A. Mayer and Elkhorn Valley Bank and Trust to consider a zone change from R1, Single Family Residential District, and C3, Service Commercial District, to C3, Service Commercial District on property addressed as 404 South 25th Street and part of 2507 West Side Avenue. And to kick off discussion on the public hearing, again, Val Grimes, please.
Thank you. This is a similar reason why we're doing a zone change on this one. The north-south lot here is the residential, and this large piece is the bank that is already zone C3. You'll see, if this passes all three readings, we will move on to the plat that will then kind of split this lot, and the southern part will be platted with the bank, and then we are leaving the residential zoning on the house. So this, again, cleans up the plat so we don't have two zonings on one lot.
Thank you, Val. Any questions? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing and hearing no one, Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 8, 2023, at the request of Roger Bader, Kirk Bader, and Jackie Mayer and Elkhorn Valley Bank and Trust to consider a zoning change from R1, Single Family Residential District, and C3, Service Commercial District, to C3, Service Commercial District, on property addressed as 404 South 25th and part of 2607 West Side Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a six-to-zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item 27. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5842 approving zoning change. Request from R1 and C3 to C3 on property addressed as 404 South 25th Street and part of 2607 West Side Avenue.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number 5842.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion on this, council? Or public input? Hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5842 carries on first reading.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5842 carries on second and third.
Item 28 would entertain a motion to consider resolution number 2023-49 approving the final plat of Elkhorn Valley Bank and Trust, Dash Bader addition.
I'll make a motion of consideration. Resolution number 2023-49.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Okay, no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-49 is adopted.
Item 29. I will open this public hearing to consider a request from Double TV Properties, LLC to consider a zoning change from R3, Multiple Family Residential District, C1, Local Business District, and C3, Service Commercial District, to C3, Service Commercial District, on property addressed as 701 South 13th Street, 707 South 13th Street, and 1229 West Pazwalk Avenue. And to give us some background on this, to kick off the hearing, again, Val Grimes, please.
Again, is something similar to what we've been doing. This is the southeast corner of Pazwalk and 13th. The Burger King is currently in this corner, and they do own the three lots that I've shown here, and it is plating all of these into one and cleaning up that zoning since there is C3, C1, and a little portion of R3 kind of on the back of this southern lot here.
Thank you, Val. Any questions? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to comment can do so now. Seeing and hearing no one, Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 8, 2023, at the request of Double TV Properties, LLC, consider a zoning change from R3, Multiple Family Residential District, C1, Local Business District, and C3, Service Commercial District, to C3, Service Commercial District, on property addressed as 701 South 13th Street, 707 South 13th Street, and 1229 West Pazwalk Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a six-to-zero vote.
Thank you. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 30. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5843 approving a zoning change from R3, C1, R3 and C1 to C3 and to C3 on property addressed as 701 South 13th Street, 707 South 13th Street, and 1229 West Pazwalk Avenue.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number 5843.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any discussion or any questions on this, council? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5843 carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5843 carries on second and third.
Item 31 would entertain a motion to consider resolution number 2023-50 approving the final plat of Burger King's addition.
I will make a motion to consider resolution number 2023-50.
Motion second, and Val, this relates to the previous item, correct?
Yes, this is just what you zone changed, just plating it all into one lot instead of three.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion on this? Or input, public input? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-50 is adopted.
Takes us to item 32. I will open this public hearing to consider a request of Brash Avenue LLC to consider a zoning change from C3, Service Commercial District, to C2, Central Commercial District, on property addressed as 300 West Brash Avenue. And once again, Val, please give us some background on this.
All right, thank you. I've brought up the zoning map so that you can see this one green lot here is C3 that we are discussing. The pink is I1, and the turquoise is C2, so you kind of get a general vicinity of what's around there. And they're requesting going from C3 to C2 because C2 is the only zoning district that does not have parking requirements, and you can see that their, their building fills up their whole lot, so they have no place for off-street parking.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions, council?
Val, what was the Planning Commission report on that?
They did pass it, yes.
Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to comment can do so now.
Anne Gere is my name. We're building on the property right to the north and east of this, and we're putting in a nice big parking lot. And we have about 30 cars that are parking there right now. It would be a hardship for the residents where we're building if restaurant people came in and filled up our parking lot when they were coming to eat. Now, I'm all for downtown, downtown advancement and everything else, so I don't know what, I don't know what could be done or should be done or whatever, but, you know, we've widened Third Street there and put diagonal parking on just to and put diagonal parking on just to the north of that, so that we've got our handicap parking and our parking for the apartments and all that kind of stuff. So we would, it would be a hardship if, I mean, it would just, it would, to fill up our parking lot by the time all of our residents come home would be irritating for the residents. I don't know. When I came to Norfolk, I lived in Room 236 Madison Hotel, which is there, and Zastro owned a section in the middle there, so when I lived at the Elkhorn Hotel, we rented parking lot from him. But apparently, VFW, VFW buy all of that one, or who owns the parking lot to the west?
To the west of.
West of this building.
So just.
All the way out. Anyway, it would be a hardship.
Dan, did you have any opinion on the zoning change itself? Okay. All right. So the public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so? Okay. Hearing no one, Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 8, 2023, at the request of Brosch Avenue LLC to consider a zoning change from C3, Service Commercial District, to C2, Central Commercial District, on property addressed as 300 West Brosch Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a six-to-zero vote.
I do have a comment before you go. C3, C2, will they both accommodate restaurant?
Yes.
They will?
Yeah. The only thing that C2 restaurant-wise would not accommodate would be like a drive-through without a conditional use permit. That's what C3 would outright allow. Yeah.
So just trying to figure out this change. So like downtown, a lot of restaurants obviously don't have designated parking for their business. So are they in a C2 zone there?
Yes. Norfolk Avenue is C2 zoning, yes.
And Val, the comp plan generally in downtown calls for a C2 designation.
Mixed use, I think, is what it's called, but yeah.
Which is the closest, C2 is the closest to what we currently have that is considered mixed use.
Right.
So the intent then for if this restaurant opens is to just park on the street?
For the open BPD downtown lots, you'd have, so if you look at, here's a public parking lot down the block this way, and another public parking lot, city-owned, a block down the other way. Or they could use on-street parking, yes, if they could find it.
So is anybody from the VFW concerned about their parking lot being used?
They did come to Planning Commission.
They did?
Yes. And they were concerned about people using the lots, and they did make a comment at Planning Commission that they will have signs posted, tow trucks, ready to go, that sort of thing.
I think that message was received loud and clear by the developer, who is looking at what options he has to potentially make arrangements. From my understanding, he did try to approach VFW to make some kind of arrangement for shared parking, but they were not interested in that. And I would remind, like, the zoning change before us, it does not, I understand there's concerns about parking here, but the zoning change does not directly address any of that except for not requiring, not requiring this development to have any parking minimums. So. Any other discussion before we move on?
This building's basically going to sit vacant unless you do the change, because whoever buys it, if it doesn't work for him, next person's going to buy it, it's going to happen. As soon as they go to pull the permit and it's C3, they're going to provide parking. So in order for this building to develop into anything, you've got to go, you have to have C2. Now, the neighbors, do not have to allow them to park there. Now, you don't have to let somebody park your parking lot. So like I say, you know, like you were talking, have the signs put up, no parking, I think that'll send a strong message to the customers coming there not to use the VFW's parking lot. So the people, if in this particular restaurant, you're just going to be walking a block or so to get there.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the hearing and move to item number 33 and look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5844 approving zoning change from C3 to C2 on property addressed as 300 West Brosch Avenue. Do I hear a motion?
I will offer for consideration ordinance number 5844. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion, any further discussion or questions on this? Okay. Hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5844 carries on first reading.
Mayor, can I interject here? Apparently, there's a lot of folks that are tuning in from home that are having trouble with the audio on the streaming device, which we're working on, apologize for, but it's available on cable TV. So lots of folks are asking about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Val. I hear motion to potentially approve, suspend the rules and approve on second, third?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second, third reading.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5844 carries on second and third.
Okay. That takes us to our regular agenda, and given the amended agenda, we will start with item number 10. So I would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-46 approving the final allocation of levy authority for the Norfolk Airport Authority for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, allowing the Norfolk Airport Authority to levy a property tax of $857,269.
I will offer for consideration resolution number 2023-46. Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. And for some background on this, I believe we'll hear from Randy Gates, the city fiscal officer.
Yes, this is a requirement. This is a requirement of statutes. The Airport Authority has to request a levy allocation from the city by August 1, and by September 1, the city has to say how much they are giving the Airport Authority. This resolution would provide them with the amount that they requested of $857,269 and matches what is in their budget. It's a $102,000 increase from the prior year. Is there any questions?
What'd you say, an increase?
$102,000.
102.
I think, okay, thank you, Randy, for that background. I know we do have representatives of Airport Authority here tonight. I think probably a natural question is if that levy did increase, that total increased by about $100,000 from previous year's budget, what exactly that proposed $100,000 increase would go to? If there's anyone from the Airport Authority who'd care to speak to that? And I will say, and I will just note, I know this isn't the first time you've addressed this, Eli. We have had budget review sessions and another discussion about budget recommendation approval. Yes, this is, I think this is your third time, but yes.
Whichever.
Please introduce yourself.
My name's Elijah Mackey. I'm the Norfolk Airport Manager, and the big items on this list are starting the process of getting runway improvements and a new terminal building, FBO and terminal building. Our current terminal building was built in 1974, and the last major update to it was done in about 2004, 2005. So it's long overdue for improvements. This process has been in the works for the past five years, I believe. In 2020, we did an economic impact study by the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics, and the airport contributes approximately 13.6 million to the local economy.
Okay. Thank you. Eli?
13.6 million.
So to answer that question of where that extra $100,000 goes to here, it's for planning and design purposes for both runway improvements? Can you talk about those a little bit?
So with the runway improvements, the last time we had any major improvements done to the runway was in about 2005. Concrete, as we all know, deteriorates. So in order to reverse that process, start over on that process, or renew the runways, we need to do a rehabilitation. Anything we do with the runway improvements, 10% of that is locally funded, and 90% of that is federally funded. So with the runway, we're going to be doing what's called a rehabilitation, where we're going to take the concrete we have, we're going to rehabilitate it in some way, shape, or form. I'd have to check as far as what the specifics on that is, what it entails, and as far as everything else, we would be able to keep the space that we have there right now. We wouldn't have to go to the FAA and justify every square inch of concrete that we have at the airport. If we wait 10, five, 10 years, then it could go to a reconstruction. If that's the case, then we have to go to the FAA to justify every square inch of pavement we have out at the airport. And the FAA is more, anytime you deal with the federal government, you're dealing with more stringent requirements. So there's a good chance that we would lose space and then lose potential traffic that we have coming in, potential for an airline to come in, potential for charter services to come in. So we're trying to avoid that from happening by starting the process now.
Do you know the difference between the two? Like, so you take that $102,000, about how much is that going to the terminal plan or study, and then how much of that $102,000 is going to your runway improvements?
So in our budget numbers, we have $60,000 going to the runway improvements, and we have 300 and some thousand going to the building itself. I believe that's listed out in our budget that we've seen before.
Yeah. Then what, start of your fiscal, what's your beginning balance?
I'm Amy Sisson, and I am the accountant for the airport. That $102,000, 60,000 of that is for preliminary design stuff of this rehabilitation of the runways. And then we have like 40,000 of it that is for, we have hangers that are leaking that need an overlay on the roof, and that's what that is for.
Yeah. Well, 1.4.
Of our, yeah, we're at 1.4.
Do you believe of your current budget, with 1.4 beginning balance, you could fund the $102,000 on your own without asking for a mill levy increase?
Well, we have 300 and, let me see the exact number here, 300 and some thousand that is coming out of our reserve fund for the design phase, $371,576 that's coming out of our reserves for the, for design phase on the new terminal building, that we're not asking any additional funds for that.
Yeah. Right.
Well, we have planned to use some of our funds that we have built up towards that building project, and that's, the design phase stuff is part of that.
Yeah. So with the property tax evaluations this year, with evaluations going up, Randy, with their current mill levy of the 2022, 23 year compared to this year, how much evaluation difference was there?
Their, the valuation went up, well, their mill levy went up 13 and a half percent. Went from 3.4495 cents to 3.6148 cents.
Well, that's with the $100,000, $102,000 request. I'm asking, so if you look at the difference, take the mill levy, set it the same as it was, it was set last year, with the valuation of properties, how much did their budget increase with the mill levy they're at?
Hang on just a second. That would make their mill levy 3.172 cents compared to.
Which equates to how many dollars? I guess I'm getting, that's what I'm trying to get at, is the dollar amount of between last year, and if you've got a 7% increase or a 10% increase, and the sale property taxes brought into, at the same mill levy because evaluations went up, I kind of want to know what that dollar amount is. Is that, do you follow what I'm saying?
Oh, if they kept their levy rate the same?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
So on that $102,000, the 60 and the 40, the 2,000 is because that's what the county keeps.
Right.
It's 2%.
And that kind of reason why I'm asking him these questions.
What are the, what is the timeline for the FAA funding for the runway improvements? Is there one?
We're doing the design phase part of it in this fiscal year, and then the actual construction probably will be in the next couple, because the construction is like 13 million dollars total, I believe, the rehabilitation, I should say. And our consultants from Olson told us that, you know, like, if we wait that five or 10 years, and we're looking at the total reconstruction instead of rehabilitation, you're looking at probably a $30 million project instead of 13. And of that 13, 90% of it, the federal government will pay, and the rest will have to come from our local fund.
Are there any other questions while Randy continues to work on that number?
I guess I got a, I got a comment. I said I was able to take a tour of the airport last week. Eli did a great job. He showed us around. I guess I was kind of shocked with what rental rates are for people that own airplanes and have airplanes versus what others would be charging elsewhere in a commercial setting. So when you mentioned that the roofs are leaking, that kind of falls back on the, on the cost of what a hanger is, and that should have been reinvested. And I guess I have a hard time going to increase this $102,000. So I would agree with Shane. There are some other things that were brought to my attention. I would agree with Shane, if we could leave the mill levy the same as a year ago, I would be on favor of that. But I don't, I don't see where the increase of the future FBO brings enough return on investment to the City of Norfolk to put that on the back of the taxpayer. I don't see where the return in investment is on 13, or on whatever, this 6 million of 6.2 million dollar building.
But, it's getting kind of confusing for everyone right now, because what happens is you're talking about this new building, right? And.
And that's separate from this pavement rehabilitation.
It's separate from this budget, right. The thing is, though, I think what we need to do moving forward is you're going to ask, when you get your plans done, then you're going to ask to how that bond debt's going to be paid, which would be another mill levy increase somehow or another. And so those are kind of the things we're going to need to know, you know, I guess it'd be next year's fiscal, we'd be talking about it. So it's not tonight we're talking about that sort of bond debt, and.
Yeah, we will be coming to you probably, once we get the design phase, and if it goes bidding or whatever, we will be coming to you.
You also need to know your operational costs at that time, too. You also need to know your operational costs at that time, too. I'm just warning you, because you need to know operational costs, what that's going to do to increase your budget to now take care of this new shiny building and all, you know, what goes along with that. So, you know, so here's where we're at tonight, we're in a sticky situation because we've been working with our budget, and we've asked staff to do a mill levy reduction. And a lot of that reduction came out of what they asked for, their cost of living increase. So they came to us initially with a five percent cost of, cost of living increase, which we call a COLA. You'll hear say COLA a lot. And we've worked with, we told them, no, we're not going to do that. We started, we went to four, and I think now we're going to maybe, it's probably going to be suggested to go three and a half. So we've dropped that, that's about a hundred and eighty K out of what we're telling staff we're not going to pay in our wages this year. But then we've got you guys coming and asking for another hundred. It just puts us in a really tough situation as far as a council to approve somebody's budget and then ask other people who work for the city to take us, to make a sacrifice. So I'm just putting that out there, just it, and I know we've talked about it a little bit. I said this hundred and two thousand is a tough deal, it really is. I want to see you guys succeed because you are the gateway, you are a gateway into our community. You're one of the first things people see when they fly in, you are the first thing they see when they fly in the community. So it was important that your runways are done properly and everything's safe and everything meets code and up to stuff. But we're in a tough situation tonight because we're, of what I just talked about earlier. I think that's where Corey was going with approving the mill levy increase or the mill levy ask of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, carrying that same over, which would then, that's what I'm trying to get the number from Randy, how much that actually increased your budget, your, what you would receive because property evaluations went up in the same time.
Drastically.
Yeah, drastic, everybody, everybody felt that.
I can attest to that at my house, yes.
So that's what I'm getting at, so. And I think, I think with the tough spot we're in, and if you want to move forward, you know, I think this is kind of...
Well, I do know that in the past, in the past, we had left our, we had left our tax request, and I know we have some new council members and stuff, we had left our tax request the same for like four or five years.
Right.
You know, and last year, or this, it's been the same amount for... It actually went down from what I have on here. Oh, that's estimated. I mean, we have, we have left it the same for a number of years, and then we did ask for, you know, an increase.
But a lot of, a lot of, a lot of communities and municipalities have been able to leave it the same for the last few years because property evaluations have increased so much. But, so your mill levy stays the same, but the money coming in changes because the property evaluations have gone up so much. And you take four years' time with a ten percent this last year, you know, property evaluation probably gone up thirty percent. So that's what I'm, you know, so the mill levy increase is not something to take lightly.
And I bring it to you what the board has asked me to bring to you, too.
Right, and I agree that, and I'm not, I'm not here to give you a hard time.
Because I don't have a voting say in, you know, what they asked me to do, so.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm trying to, I'm trying to state our position, my position.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that.
These are good discussions to have to bring this all out. And we have had a process, yes, so we've considered your budget. There were some initial discussions at the first review. You guys came back, made some adjustments, and then that was approved a couple of weeks ago. So it is a challenge, I know, to keep rehashing some of this. But Shane makes some very fair points in terms of, we recognize you're in a position of preparing for a significant investment that you're trying to take on yourself, more or less. And for purposes of making that happen, I think part of his point is, work with us a little bit right now to make, to pay for these, considering your entire budget, slight expenses that you'll be incurring related to the runway improvements and the rehab hangers. And I would encourage you to maybe, to do that, consider further use of reserves or adjusting some of those hangar rentals, as was mentioned by Councilman Hildebrand, or fuel prices. I know we've talked about that quite a bit in the future.
And we did give you some data with the last council meeting that I was not able to be here, part of showing you, you know, what our fuel average selling price is, our average margins on it. And because I think the council thought we were selling it way too cheap and we were losing money, we're not. We're making money on our fuel sales. We're just trying to keep them affordable enough that people do want to stop here.
Right, I understand that.
And get fuel because they don't have to have landing spots and pay all these fees like they do in bigger airports.
See, what presents, when you, this is where I get blowback from the community, is when you make a statement that we're providing our fuel at a lower cost, so we...
A little bit lower than some, Eli had a sheet, I think he did, or something around.
And when, as I hear, the taxpayers subsidize their fuel costs.
No, they're not, because we're making money on it.
Well, that's good to know, I'm glad you said that.
And that was given to you guys, too.
It's important to get that information out there so the public does know that, so they don't feel that way.
With that, is, do you feel there's a reasonable way to adjust that slightly to cover some of these extra expenses while still remaining competitive in the market?
There's a way you can do it, but then you're going to have the local pilots who are going to be in uproar from it. You don't want to, you don't want to fight the people that you serve directly. In addition to that, we would also be concerned with, say Columbus is five cents more expensive than us. We'd raise our fuel price up a little bit, and then it...
They might, they don't care where they go, Columbus are here. Or if it's cheaper in Wayne, I've had people say, well, it doesn't cost us that much to fly to Wayne. We'll fly to Wayne and get our fuel.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we're trying to stay.
Right.
And we're getting a lot of flyover traffic, jets and things and stuff, too.
I mean, I totally want you to be busy, I would like to see you very busy out there, you know, and I'd love to see a charter come in here and fly out of there. There's a lot of good things that could happen with that. I'm just stating what, if you heard me, what I had to say, so.
Yes, I understand that. And I know that rents had been looked at just a few years ago compared to rents in other places. And you can't really compare a commercial property rental rate to an airport hangar because commercial property, you can do about anything with it. An airplane hangar, you can park your airplane in it. You can't, you know, stuff it full of stuff or sell stuff out of it, or... So I mean, you know, there's some differences there that you can't charge what you would for commercial space.
Okay, but one of the questions that I had when I did take the tour is that you don't even need to have an airplane in operational, and you can get eighty-five dollar rent for a hangar. You don't even have to be operational. That was a little concerning to me.
That's not something I can...
That's concerning to me, is that all we have to have is a fuselage and some airplane wings, and we can have a hangar and the cheapest rent in town. That's, that's very concerning to me, because if a person can afford an airplane, they can afford some rent to put it in. That's, that's where I'm coming at, that's what I'm hearing. So I think there's some inefficiencies with how this is, how this has been laid out. And I think we could capitalize on some fuel. Yes, I'm still going to stick to the fuel, I'm still going to stick to the rent. The leasing of hangers, I think we're missing a lot of, a lot of potential that would not have to necessarily go back on the taxpayer. When, what was the number last time, like thirty-six percent of Madison County actually has an airplane in there? Otherwise, it's from other communities?
Well, from this, no, residents of the city of Norfolk.
Residents from the city of Norfolk.
Otherwise, you know, a lot of them live outside the city of Norfolk. And the only way to change that and try to get funds for that is through the state legislature, which...
Well, regional airport, maybe it should be, maybe it should be looked at.
I mean, we've had this discussion many times, too, that you just, we're going to go to the Madison County Commissioners and say, give us money for the airport, I mean, it just isn't going to happen because it is part of the city of Norfolk. And now that the property's been annexed, it definitely is a part of the city of Norfolk.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So we get into the rehabilitation or the resurfacing, you're talking getting reimbursed from the federal government?
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent.
So we have six hundred thousand for the planning and design phase, and the reason, that sixty thousand is our ten percent portion, the other five hundred and forty will come from the FAA.
That was my question, I was wondering if the sixty thousand...
That is our local portion, so the rest of that comes from the FAA.
Okay, thank you.
And I have to turn down ninety percent reimbursement from the FAA.
Because you get five hundred, so it's six hundred thousand dollars.
It's six hundred thousand that we have in the budget for the year. Five hundred and forty will come from the FAA, and we have to put sixty thousand into it, the local funds.
So the six hundred thousand is just for consultation?
That's just for designing of the rehabilitation of all of it, from Olson and Associates.
Okay.
And to answer your question, Shane, it would be eight hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and seven dollars if they left their levy rate the same.
Eight hundred and eighteen thousand, he said?
Eight, yeah, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and seven.
One hundred and seven, if the levy rate was left the same as it was last year.
Eli, the study for economic impact was thirteen point six or three point six million?
Thirteen point six. And that was a study that was done that we actually had the state come and give, and you may not have been on the...
Yeah, right, thank you.
But that's only, that's only forty thousand different than the budget they're requesting right now.
Yes.
But we're asking for a hundred and two increase to the mill levy.
Well, from, from what we had requested last year, but because of the increase in the evaluations and stuff is what he's referring to.
Right, but that's...
If we kept our mill levy the same, we'd be at eight.
Well, you technically...
But the request should be more in the forty thousand...
In the forty thousand range.
Range instead of a hundred and two.
One fifty, eight fifty-seven and eight eighteen.
Basically, same difference between the funding generated from your levy last year compared to this one.
Forty, which would give you the sixty to pay for the, for sure to pay for your, your runway improvements with, with no mill levy increase. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, sixty for the runway improvements, forty for the hangar rehab.
For what we had last year.
You'd only be out twenty grand.
We'd be like at eight hundred, yeah.
You'd be out twenty grand, you'd only have to come up with twenty grand out of your beginning balance to do it with the mill levy staying where it was.
Staying the same as it was with the increased valuations.
Right. So I mean, you know, I don't know, but, so we're asking for a hundred and two, we really, should we be talking about sixty? Essentially.
Well, we had the forty for the, you know, building improvements, is what we needed to do, so.
And I think we probably all agree that the sixty is important to find to utilize that value, but...
What I'm, you hear what I, you understand I'm saying, right?
Yes.
It's not quite, right.
So at that suggestion, suggestion, then, Councilman, are you saying that, encouraging them to leave the levy rate where it is and find within existing budget?
Yeah.
So in that way, it is, it is somewhat of a compromise because it allows the budget recommendation, the budget that you presented to us to move forward and to be adopted as part of the formal budget. But then it also keeps the rate at where it was, does not present an increase. And I think reasonably, you could find room, we're suggesting that you find room to pay for the runway improvements via the FAA, which comes down to about the sixty.
Roughly.
Any more discussion on that, Councilor questions?
They do have one point eight million for a new building and hangar and bond fees in the budget.
No, we haven't, there's been no bond debt issued for that.
Maybe it's page thirty-seven, am I reading that wrong, of the enclosure?
Yeah, that was for, that, we had met with Steve, and he had suggested that, you know, if we get the designs done and it goes to bid, there's a potential that we may start building before the end of our next fiscal year, and that we would be paying out some, but we would have to come to you guys to get the bonds issued first before we can go to that step.
There would be bonding authorized, well, let's make sure on that, bonding authorized would have to come from council approval before that happened, correct? Yeah, but it's a place, it's a place...
Not the full amount, it's kind of like, it's like our capital...
Yeah, because it's not going to get all built in one year.
But tonight, you're not voting with this, but you're not voting to create any debt service for bonds that'd be issued for the building. That'll be next year, when they, you'll have to come back to us and ask if we're okay issuing debt. And I don't know how that, we got to hear a lot of discussions, I guess, so.
But this would be a good first step, good, good faith effort to get to a place where we all want to be, I think, is an improved airport that utilizes all the market opportunities before it and improves service and makes a sound investment in the future. While also, you know, being very prudent with the levy as it is in front of us, too.
You know, and we kind of want to know that we're gonna have support for this bond thing, because if we're going to spend almost four hundred thousand dollars of our own money on a design of a building, and then that's going to be for nothing, you know, so we do have, we have the bond issue on here with the potential to spend part of it in that year and part of it in the next. And we're just basically, you know, kind of want some assurances that you guys are okay with this before we spend four hundred thousand dollars on design services.
That's probably for another discussion than not tonight. Tonight, we're approving a mill levy. That's what, that's what, that's what's in front of us.
But that, that speaks to the budget, a recommendation that you've brought before us that, that has been approved to be part of the formal budget that we'll see in a few weeks. So, I mean, I think that, that says something in itself. I think the conversation tonight is centered around ways we can be creative, if you will, to keep that levy where it was last year.
I understand that.
So we're in a solid footing to consider those further investments as we move forward.
I would say if you want more confidence in the way we're going to do things, and this speaks to Eli, you, when you talk about hangar rates, or you talk about fuel prices, or we talk about fifty-year, forty-nine-year contracts and leasing out property allowing people to build on public property, you just want to make sure you're in line with the council. Maybe having your meetings here, being in line with the council, I think that's what it comes down to. Making sure that the decisions we make reflect the community we serve. And I think that this all gets much easier.
Right, I think it's fair to point out, too, that Eli's five weeks under this job.
Eli's doing a good job.
Eli's doing a good job.
And I like Eli.
And Eli has been very communicative with city staff and the council and elected officials and has inherited a fairly complicated situation, so.
Eli, you're doing an amazing job.
Any further discussion on this, Council?
So is there an amendment to this, then?
Potentially, that's what I'm hearing.
Do we have the value of what we're decreasing this by, then?
Hundred and two.
Hundred and two?
Well, we're not...
Decreasing the proposed by, by a hundred and two?
We're not, we're not, we're not authorizing the levy increase. We're approving the mill levy from twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-three, twenty, no, twenty twenty-two.
If that were to happen, it would have to be made in the form of a motion to amend that was before us. But we'll take public input.
Jim McKenzie, first of all, this has been a great discussion. I'm appreciative of the discussion. I was kind of surprised that this was on consent agenda, which would have been no discussion, so I'm glad that came off. I guess the concern that I have is the budget and that you're approving the levy for, as she previously stated, has three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for building, planning, and design for the new airport terminal building, which also included in that budget, this year's budget, is six point two million dollars of bond issuance. I realize they have to come back and ask for that, but it's in this year's budget. It's in what you're approving the levy for, for the design portion.
Right.
I guess the concern that I have is, what, what is the impact on the taxpayers of that six point two million? And I just want to set the groundwork that we need to have some discussion of where that's going to be because when we asked the airport folks, they said, well, it's going to be a small increase, but when I do the calculations, it's pretty substantial. That building is going to cost almost as much as your police station renovation was. And I could see their levy going up another fifty percent on top of the fifteen percent to pay for that, so...
Jim, not your police station reservation, our, our.
Our, hundred percent, thank you. So I guess the other question that goes along with that is, how did this all of a sudden jump to be a higher priority than our police station expansion? I mean, similar in price, same time... I mean, similar in price, same taxpayers are gonna pay for it, same property taxes are gonna pay for it. Is this now more important than the police station expansion? That's fallen silent. Don't hear anything about that. So I think that's an important question for the community as a whole to know. That's why I asked for this to be pulled off the consent agenda so we can have this discussion on community priorities. And I know Rob Dover kind of threw a dart at me for saying reckless, but you know what? That's, maybe he forgot his civics lessons that, you know, we're supposed to be able to consider and question our, our elected officials and have input. And so that's why I wanted to bring this off and have some real discussion about as a community, how much can we afford? What are our decisions? We can't have them, well, maybe we can have them both. If everybody supports a big tax increase, we could have everything. But I don't think the citizens are biting off on that right now. And so I think it's good that we have this discussion. I'm glad this came off the agenda and I hope we have more discussion on exactly what that's gonna cost citizens and compare that and contrast that to our police station. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Kim Davis. I'm sitting back there listening to, you know, their, their plans and everything and I, and I'm kind of trying to liken it to me as a homeowner, okay? I, I have an income. I want to put a patio on the back of my home for, you know, my enjoyment. I know how much I make a month. I know how much I have to put back. I also know that I've been backed up a year now because my homeowner's taxes went up significantly as lo, as well as my homeowner's insurance, as well as my car insurance and everything else. What I, my point is, I'm not pretending to know everything about the airport authority, but for once I would like to see a government entity stay within the budget that is given to them. If you know you're going to have a big project come up, how about putting some of that money back? The last meeting that I was at here, one of our councilmen made a statement, he was appalled that the citizens didn't show up for the meeting at the airport authority. I didn't know anything about it. Even if I did know about it, I probably wouldn't have had the time because I'm too busy working to pay my taxes. But I want to remind everyone, and I have, you guys wear a multitude of hats, I know this, I, I can't imagine how you keep track of everything. But one of the hats you wear is what we taxpayers voted for you for, and that is to go to these meetings, to pay attention to what's going on and to back us for once. Stop taxing us. Give us a break. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any, anyone else wishing to speak?
Excuse me, my name is John Linky, and if you have a hard time hearing me, hold up your hand because it's very limited with my voice. I am a tenant at the airport. I've owned an airplane for about fifteen or twenty years and I flew professionally here, working at the hospital with the helicopter for another twenty years before that, so the airport is a very important issue to my heart. I've heard over the years that I've been here, fuel, fuel cost adjustments, hangar rent adjustments and the rest of it. And I know a lot of people look at me as a rich capitalist big because I own my own airplane, well, my airplane has a value less than the sixty-one thousand dollar Chevrolet, or excuse me, Buick Enclave sitting down in the Chevrolet dealer's showroom. And I, I park it in a hangar that costs me well more than eighty-five dollars a month. And I keep take care of my hangar, but the hangar that I am in probably was built in nineteen eighty-six and it has had one coating on the roof since nineteen eighty-six. Otherwise, it still has the same electric motor that runs the door up and down. It still has the same cable in it that runs the door up and down when it was built. It still has the same screws in it that are now falling out because they've been in it so long. So does my hangar rent need to go up to adjust in order to get a new roof put on it? Maybe it does, but it also needs to be reasonable enough so that I can operate my aircraft such as so many other people can operate their boats or their RVs or whatever it is. If you own an RV, I praise the Lord for you because you buy fuel and you put it on the road and you check out all of the parks in the country and you spend your money. I do the same thing with my airplane. I pay for it out of my pocket. I've been retired for five years now and I do make a fair amount, thank you to Uncle Sam. But on the other hand, I do pay the same taxes that this woman talked about and the taxes on my house since I bought it have gone up over a hundred percent. So I'm well aware of the taxes and I'm well aware that the city needs to back responsibility responsibly and manage the airport as well as everything else, but if the airport is the gateway to our community for people flying in here, then I think we need to bear that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, council, where are we at? Do I, do I hear a motion to amend or any further discussion?
So you, you approve a property ten dollars amount. So what's in the resolution now is that eight hundred and fifty-seven two sixty-nine? So the actual levy rate is what's calculated and I think Randy calculated what last year's tax levy was.
Yeah, if you wanted to keep the levy rate the same, you would change that number to eight hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and seven dollars.
So, so then with that in mind, councilman, we would need a resolu, an amendment, a proposed motion to amend resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-six to replace the two, the two numbers in there that are currently eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine and to amend them to both read eight hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and seven dollars. So if that's, if that's the, the goal of the council, that would be the proper amendment in this case.
Danny, can you say that number again?
So what's currently here is eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine in two places, so we would need a motion to amend in both places and change that number to eight hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and seven dollars, is my, is my understanding.
Yeah, you're just changing the, be it resolved because the airport requested a levy allocation of eight hundred and fifty-seven two sixty-nine. You'd be giving them eight hundred and nineteen one oh seven.
That's fine. We, we just need a motion to amend from that number and we need it on, on the record, what the number was and then what the number is gonna become for purposes of the resolution before we pass it.
I'll make a motion to amend the eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to eight hundred and eighteen seven oh one?
One oh seven.
One oh seven.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion second for the amendment. Any further discussion on that? Good discussion, good points made on all sides. If no further discussion, please vote.
Voting in favor, Arns, McCarthy, Muirin, Snorton, Klaassen, Hildebrand, voting in opposition, Webb. Motion to amend is approved.
Resolution, okay, so that, that puts us in position then to vote on the underlying resolution as amended. Do I hear a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as amended at eight hundred and eighteen one oh seven?
Second thought?
Did I do that wrong, Breanna?
Just, just to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As amended.
Sorry.
We good? Resolution.
As amended.
Twenty twenty-three dash forty-six.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll move to approve the, or twenty twenty-three dash forty-six?
Yep, as amended.
As amended, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. The, the discussion was easy compared to all that. Oh, yeah, all right, motion second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Voting in favor, Arns, McCarthy, Muirin, Snorton, Klaassen, Hildebrand, voting in opposition, Webb. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-six is adopted as amended.
All right, that returns us back to regular agenda. And item number thirty-four would look for a motion to consider approval of, of an agreement with United, or I'm sorry, Union Pacific Railroad Company to accept the donation to the city of the railroad bridge located northwest of three oh nine North First Street.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company.
All right, motion is second and for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Mayor and council, I'll, I'll speak here to agenda item thirty-four specifically. The comments, many of the comments will be relevant to agenda item thirty-five as well. So before you hear is an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad where the city would accept the old railroad through Trust Bridge that sits southeast of Hennington Foods across the North Fork of the Elkhorn River. The reason that we would do that is relative to the next agenda item thirty-five subsequently, or subsequent, directly subsequent to receiving the donation. We would enter an agreement with Deco Construction of Norfolk to have the bridge relocated south on the river where it would become a trail crossing as part of our community trail system and sort of part of the, the overall Johnson Park project. It's been a vision, I think, of the community, they, we're probably going back to about twenty twenty-five or so as the Riverfront Committee formed back around that time and started exploring this Johnson Park River project and, and the improvements that are currently going on. So again, this, this agreement, I was gonna look here, you can see this agreement dated at the top is dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, so we've been working on the project, working with the Garry's in terms of the next agenda item for the relocation and just working through all the details associated with it and we are now ready to move this forward. You can see here it's a fairly straightforward agreement. City legal counsel was engaged in the process of developing this with Union Pacific Railroad, so. Mayor, I'd open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Steve, I think, I think it should be noted that, sitting through these, these subcommittee meetings with this, I think this is, this is a very commendable project by, by the Garry's to put investment in our downtown and, and still restore the history of, of, of the train bridge that, that served Norfolk for many, many years, so. I think that's, that's something to be mentioned for, for the Garry's for doing what they're doing.
Yeah, well said, councilman. This, from where I'm sitting, this, this wouldn't be possible without the public-private partnership and the, the effort of the Garry's to take this on and get the bridge moved. First of all, retaining it, retaining the history of it. And second, more directly integrating it into the surrounding development of the Riverfront area, so. Great partnership and great civic engagement by the Gary family. Any other discussion on this, council or public? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty-five would look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement with Deco Construction Company Incorporated, a Nebraska corporation, to relocate the retired railroad bridge that crosses the North Fork of the Elkhorn River downstream to an area approximately three hundred feet west of North First Street near the walking trail that connects to Johnson Park where the bridge will be placed on a new foundation and modified for use as a pedestrian walkway over the North Fork of the Elkhorn River.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Deco Construction Company.
Second that.
Motion second. Steve and/or Danny, anything else to add regarding the agreement?
I think just some follow-up, some follow-up comments here to what Councilman Hildebrand said. So this is the agreement and it, it wraps, sort of wraps the liability for the relocation under an agreement with, with Deco. Attached here are three exhibits as well attached to the agenda item. You'll see the primarily exhibit one. There was a, a structural review of the bridge done. There are some minor repair that would need to occur probably before it gets relocated. The plans for the bridge, the relocation, the new abutments and stuff are also attached to this exhibit three. I think what's important to note here is that this relocation of this bridge is a donation to the city by Deco Construction. There is no cost to us for this. I believe early on, as I was working with Dan on this, the estimated cost for this was north of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's, it's a significant undertaking on their part, a significant contribution to, to the community.
Thank you, Steve. Very significant, again, and, and much appreciated. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty-six would look for a motion to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one to approve a grant application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund of the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars to add a fourth softball field at Taizuka Park.
I will offer consideration, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one.
Motion is second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Nate Powell, Parks and Rec Director.
Mayor and council, unlike the other agreement, this is an application for a grant. This is a request to apply for a grant to build a first of three or four adult league fields that we need on the north end. On the north side of McKinley Avenue from the existing fields one, two and three there. We did conduct the Taizuka Master Plan last year and based on the information we gathered, we saw the need for a, a, a three or four field complex in the north there. This would allow us to have one complex for the adult league and one for the girls' fast pitch leagues. This would allow us also to host more tournaments and to have less competition for the three fields that we are using. Fields four and five are not usable for, for adult league because of, they're just not shaped right. They cut roads into, into it, so it's a little bit shorter than it needs to be for an adult league complex. So that's why we have problems with using those. We are investing one point six, six million into fields one, two and three, the complex. Investment is from NPS and Northeast Community College, the Mallon, Kohler Estate and also the city. And so we want to leverage those funds for this grant. This would, we would use the one point six million to serve as our match and staff recommends approval to apply for the LDPCF grant of four hundred thousand dollars using our existing project funds for a match.
Okay, thank you, Nate. Any questions on that? Again, this authorizes just the application to make this grant?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I appreciate staff being creative and exploring alternative resources to get this work done. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one is adopted.
All right, takes us to item thirty-eight, would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight forty-five. number 5845, authorizing issuance of special assessment bonds, anticipation notes, and the principal amount not to exceed 3.8 million dollars for paving districts 520 and 521, sewer districts 255, and water district 128.
Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Randy Gates, our Fiscal Officer.
Yes, Your Honor, this is for the construction period financing until we get these districts levied and assessed. A small part of this is for Walters Fourteenth Edition, it's about 271,000. The rest is for the Norfolk 140 subdivision. The total expected note issue is around 3.7 million dollars, as shown on the sources and uses of funds, but we authorize up to 3.8 million since this is a parameters resolution and doesn't have the exact numbers in it. It also authorizes a interest cost up to 5.75. I think it'll be closer to 4%. These notes will be marketed on Thursday, I expect, and the ordinance provides for the final interest rate, two interest costs, and aggregate principal amount to be determined and a written designation signed by either the mayor or myself at a later date. The general obligation portion of this note is approximately 11%, with remaining 89% funded with special assessments. And answering any questions, and we also have Bruce Lefler from Piper Sandberg who can answer questions.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions on this?
Randy, with all the districts, the sewer district, water district, and paving district, this will all be assessed to the adjacent property owner, correct?
Yes, except for the GO portion, which is about 11% of the bond issue. So for the intersection costs, that kind of thing.
Correct.
But the rest of it will be assessed.
Assessed to the adjacent owner. Okay.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Public input?
Jim McKenzie, first of all, I want to say kudos on the last item. I knew since I was coming up on this one, I didn't want to come up on the last one, but it's great that you're going after grants for things in the park, so good job on doing that. The questions that I have on this particular agenda item is it, it looks like, I looked at the piece of property, it's owned by apparently Flat Rock Group LLC with an address of 11225 Davenport Street in Omaha, but it's registered at the Secretary of State's office as a foreign LLC. Looks like they're developing 30 out of the 76 acres. The land is evidently valued, according to the GIS site, 335,000 for the 76 acres. It appears the city is investing a little over $3 million in this development through the issuance of debt for paving sewer and water. I realize this debt gets assessed to the developed lots, but it looks like the city has way more skin in the game than the developer. I believe in the past, developers had to pay some portion of those infrastructure items, paving, water, and sewer, and now it looks like the city's paying for all of it. City's doing the full investment. What happens if this development, or others, I'm picking on this one because it's the first one that came up that I've been paying attention to, what if that development goes south? It looks like the developer has very little skin in the game other than the property. Then the city would have to buy out any tax lien certificates and then try and sell the lots to recoup their losses, so, you know, the last meeting they were talking about is there, the company that was potentially going to put a structure on here, there was some question about budget or economics, if that was even going to happen. So you got the city putting over $3 million in this development of the developer's properties worth 335,000. So I guess I question, is that the right, or do we have a policy? Do we have a policy about a developer having to contribute a certain percentage into a development? Do we realistically try and determine the value of that development after it's developed to ensure that it makes sense for the property taxpayers? Back in, when interest rates went up way back in the eighties, the city got stuck with some property that they put development money into it, and they changed the policy back then so that the developers had to put more money into it, and now it looks like we're back to...
I'll talk to you, I ask you something. So I've done some development work, you know, in the past, and we've just recently, an assessment got missed in one of the, in Sydney, Nebraska, we were working there, and the assessment got missed, and we weren't getting a letter from the city, and I, we had no idea that was happening. And finally, they got ahold of us, well, the assessment ended up being delinquent payment on that assessment, and so we had to come up with money to pay it. I mean, that, I wasn't, there was nobody off the hook on that, and it was just a mistake on, on just not getting the billing properly because we moved from where we were at and just whatever, but then it came back, and we were responsible for those assessed payments, and then as the development was going, we were paying on that, and then they have interest that they're charging us if we're not, if we don't pay them. Some developers will pay all the bond off if they can, because they don't want to pay the interest on the bonds. Some, like myself, who didn't have the money to pay the bonds off, we had to pay those bonds at the closing of that lot. So either when I bought the lot to build the house on, I would pay the debt off at that point in time, or if somebody else bought the lot and I was building the house for them, they would then pay it close. But it did happen, and then if, the other thing on that interest, there's compound interest on the bad interest that you don't pay. So if you miss a payment and you don't pay your interest each year, or they can charge you a delinquent fee on top of that interest. So I mean, there is, I feel like there is some adequate protection for cities and communities when you do it, build, because this is how most of the developments in our community were done.
They used to require the developers to put more skin in the game. They had to pay a portion of those assessments.
We did tailor in Eighteenth, we didn't.
Well, it's been...
That was, that was 2006, I think it was, maybe 06, 08?
I've talked to somebody that, well...
I'm not trying to say you didn't, I'm sure there was a time that that happened, I just...
So I guess, I mean, there is nothing that I could see that holds the developer personally responsible for those assessments. It's assessed against the property. I think the only recourse you have is to go back against that piece of property.
The person developing that property, usually, they have to be financially stable enough to have, you know, be able to back that assessment. Your developer will have to be...
How do you assess that they're financially stable? Have you done that?
I haven't personally done it, no, I'm just telling you what...
I haven't seen financial statements, but I believe, and I did not write the subdivision agreement, Steve, but doesn't the subdivision agreement say that the developer's responsible for the special assessments?
Correct. So, and I think I understand your question, and we'll see if I get there. So I pulled up the paving assessment, water district assessment, sewer district. So in this case, I'm looking at the paving district, total estimated cost, two point, right at 3 million. Intersection costs, which the city would consume is 364,000. Non-assessable costs, oversized storm sewer, city would also consume at 23, 24,000. The abutting property, in this case, would then be assessed, 2.6 million dollars. The majority of that abutting property is going to be that larger parcel that the developer would then build on. I do not know whether the developer, certainly the owner there, but whether the developer would own that, own that parcel under the developer or own it under another corporate name. The subdivision agreement does require that if the developer transfers ownership or sells the property, that the assessment gets paid off. So just depending on how they structure, you know, the ownership of the facility itself there, this 2.6 million could sit on the books, be assessed over the term of the assessment, or it could be paid off should there be a transfer in ownership from, you know, even with, within the developer's own corporate structural system. So yes, there is a requirement here, you know, that the developer will pay for that, but there is no per se upfront cost that he's putting on the table during the time of that assessment, you know, whether he's, I think you're suggesting that maybe he put 20% or 30% upfront to cover, to cover that.
And Steve, I think, I'll just interrupt there, I think in some cases, cities do have impact fees which do that very thing, but then you also hear on the other side of the coin that it discourages development, that it disincentivizes development, and we certainly do not want to get into that cycle either. And I did want to note too, that, you know, these are fair questions asked about process and how this all works, but the other way in which, in certain cases this works, is developer asks for TIF dollars to do this, and we, and these projects end up being financed by TIF. In this case, that's, that is not happening, so I think it's also fair to ask, would you rather that be the case here, to finance new infrastructure that accommodates development?
And just let me answer the risk question. So there is a, because this is being assessed, we have an agreement, the engineering agreement is through the city, we would ultimately put the plans out for bids and issue construction documents. So if, even though we're going to pay 125,000 to get the water sewer and paving designed, if we get to that point and the developer says, you know, I'm not quite ready to move forward, there's no reason for us to move forward and put out those construction documents either, so we have a little, a little bit of risk control there.
I guess I'm, I'm just bringing up the question that when I look at the property and the fact that the city is putting in citizens' tax dollars for all of the infrastructure with the hope that the developer will pay it back, and we hope that he does, we hope he's successful, we hope it all gets paid back, but it seems to me that there's a risk factor here that's pretty large, and when you've got a foreign LLC that we really probably don't know much about, that risk, you know, it's all on the citizen, so I'm just curious if we're actually have some kind of policy or make sure that that, that those dollars aren't evidently coming back to the city to have to pay that off.
Well, I mean, one thing that I can state, some I've been part of before, is usually before you start the project, you figure out kind of what these assessments are going to be, so you know what your lot values will be, and then you've got, obviously, you've got dirt work to do, you've got cleanup to do, and all these things. If you can finance it all on your own, that's great, if not, you're at a bank, sitting there with them, showing them the debt, the debt your service you're going to have if you don't, and so they know what those bonds are going to be, and that goes, they factor that in when they approve you to start your project, because they're not going to approve you to start a project without...
In this case, there is no bank, the city is the bank. They own the property, the city is...
I'm talking about, when I go, even if you're doing assessments on a property and we're setting up a paving district, I still have to go into the bank and get the overall project approved, because they want to know how much debt service I'm going to have ultimately, because we are responsible for those assessments.
If they own the property...
Which, including the bond.
So they have to know how much debt you've got, because you are liable to pay those back. I had to pay one back that we missed for 20 years.
The city's selling the bonds.
Right.
And so, the city's selling the bonds for the city, the city is the one who's liable to pay those bonds off, not the developer.
But...
It's assessed to the property.
Right. But somebody's got to pay that, and the person that owns that property that is assessed to has to pay that, that's what I'm getting at. And so when we were developing, you know, we owned the land and all the assessments were put on us, which the bank takes into account to know if you can leverage yourself that much, because if, what if something happened on the developers', and what if the housing market went, you know, and now you've got these interest payments you have to make on those bonds, and you've, if you've got, and you're delinquent on those interest payments, you've got another interest on top of that to make, and then you've got, you know, so I mean, there is some, going into the deal, there is, I'm just saying that that is part of the process to get going on it.
Back in the eighties, there was a development in town that did go south, and the city did get stuck with those lots, and they had to sell them off, so it does happen.
No, I'm not saying it doesn't happen. It happened in 2010, too, in the housing market crash, you know, same thing happened.
I'm just bringing up the fact that the city's putting all of the eggs in the basket, and the developer has very little skin in the game.
Well, we had a development here in town when the market went south in 2010, you know, the market of '08 and 2010, and we, at that point in time, we put, it was a 24-house or a 20, 24 duplexes go in there, and the market went down. We were the only person in town who pulled a permit for a duplex that year, only one for a duplex that year, because that's how bad Norfolk was, but we still ultimately had to build it out, right? I couldn't, it got built out and it finished, it took longer than it was supposed to, obviously we wanted it to do, but we still ultimately were stuck with, we were stuck with that property. We couldn't get out of it, you know, we just had to fight through it and do what we could, and then obviously the market started, was doing better again, and then they all sold, but it took, it was a lot of, a lot of stress and, you know, people getting, it was a miserable time to try to do that, and I'm just saying that you get through it, I'm not...
I've used up my time, but I just, I just think it's important to give some consideration to who the entity is, how much skin in the game they got as compared to how much skin in the game the city's got, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this, comments? Okay, any further discussion, Council? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bond anticipation notes of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed $3,800,000 for the purpose of providing interim financing to pay the cost of street improvements in paving districts number 520 and 521, sewer improvements in sewer extension district number 255, and water improvements in water extension district number 128. Pending the issuance of permanent general obligation various purpose bonds of the city, prescribing the form of said notes, agreeing to issue the city's general obligation various purpose bonds to pay the notes at maturity or to pay the notes from other available funds, authorizing officers of the city to make arrangements for the sale of the notes, and to designate the final terms, rates and maturity schedule for said notes within stated parameters, authorizing officers of the city to make arrangements for the sale of the notes, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5845 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings. Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5845 carries on second and third.
Item 39 would look for a motion to consider Resolution number 2023-52 approving sidewalk waiver, a sidewalk waiver requested by Clausen Air Holdings LLC for property located at 711 South 37th Street.
Due to my relation with the person that is asking for this, I'm going to have to abstain from this vote.
I'll offer consideration, Resolution 2023-52. Second.
Motion and second. For some background on this, Val Grimes, please, our City Planner.
Thank you. This sidewalk waiver is actually for this building down here. You'll see that they do have sidewalk on the south part of their lot. They are requesting to not put sidewalk along 37th Street, and the waiver before you, if you approve it, has the standard language of not putting landscaping or development or anything along those lines, having it graded out in preparation for if the sidewalk does get installed. And if Steve Ramis would like to explain kind of where the trail is going to be.
The city trail system runs down the west side of 37th. You'll see it built there through the north half of the Fountain Point Development. The plan then is to extend that trail system all the way down to the Cowboy Trail all on the west side there of 37th Street. The trail would cross and enter the Bradford Business Park right there, I believe that's Brad, is that Bradford Avenue, Bradford Avenue? You can see there, a portion of the trail system is already built across the south side of Clausen's lot, and then also down the east side of Bradford Business Park. So we don't see sidewalk really extending north on the east side for some time. Again, that would be ultimately a council decision as to whether or not to pull that in, but we would see the trail, the trail on the west side is actually designed and on the shelf, just awaiting some funding mechanism to complete that. So, you know, I think we are, we are okay with the concept of a waiver in this situation.
Steve, was the trail on the west side always intended to cross at Bradford, cross to the east of Bradford?
It was. We looked at crossing right at the north side of what would be Clausen's lot back back there on the, kind of the northern side of the Bradford Business Park, and running the trail around the backside. Ultimately, during the design process, we brought it in and put it on Bradford Avenue, that north side of Bradford Avenue there. So that right there where the hand is, is where the crossing would be to go across.
Was consideration of that a safer pedestrian crossing, given the roadway?
Felt it was safer there, being an intersection, and there already being traffic movement. Traffic would be looking for conflict at that point to put the trail crossing north. Design team felt that that was adding another conflict point.
Okay.
What's your recommendations, Steve?
We are okay from a engineering perspective, from a city trail perspective, you know, with the waiver request. We would see it being some time before council would probably call in sidewalk on the east side all the way up to 275.
And currently, where this is proposed waiver is there's no curb and gutter out there at this time, right?
Correct. That is a rural, rural section, shoulders, no curb and gutter.
No curb, no gutter. So what about the two businesses directly below it? Look like they have sidewalks there.
Yeah, so that is, that's part of the trail system as well. So there is, the trail system is built throughout the Bradford Business Park. It kind of circulates Bradford Business Park, which is why we're wanting to connect it. But what you see there is an eight-foot trail.
And did those businesses pay for that, or did the Bradford Business Park pay for that?
Bradford Business Park paid for that.
All right. Any further discussion, questions? Public input. Okay. Hearing none. Planning Commission report, please.
On August 8, 2023, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the waiver of subdivision requirements submitted by Clausen Air, Inc. Planning Commission recommends approval of the sidewalk waiver request with a six to zero vote.
Okay, with that, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Arnz, Webb, McCarthy, Murin, Sorton, Hillbrand abstaining. Clausen, resolution 2023-52 is adopted.
All right. Item 40, we'd look for a motion to consider an addendum to the interlocal agreement between Madison County and the City of Norfolk to fund economic development operations.
I will offer for consideration an addendum to the interlocal agreement between Madison County and the City of Norfolk to fund the economic development operations. Second.
Motion in a second. To hear some background on this, Candace Alder, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in front of you, for your consideration, an addendum to the interlocal agreement between Madison County and the City of Norfolk, which was originally established in 2013. And so I'll just hit some of the high points that this addendum covers, and then open it up for questions, if any of you have any. So the Madison County Commissioners had reached out, and they wanted to make some adjustments to this agreement. And really, I think it, there was a desire to see the fund balance that has built up over the course of several years brought back down to a lower level, and then to establish a maximum fund balance for our office, and also to hear more from our office as it relates to reporting. And so in this addendum, we establish a maximum economic development fund balance of $100,000. And then we also establish mechanisms for the reduction of annual contributions for Madison County and the City of Norfolk if the economic development fund balance exceeds $100,000. So that's taken into account at the end of the fiscal year. After all of the payables are entered, any balance over $100,000 would be split evenly between the two entities. And then your contribution to the economic development fund, which is a 50-50 match at this point, would be reduced by that much. Also on there is to reset annual contributions. And so to lower the fund balance, we're expecting and estimating to have about a $330,000 balance in economic development operation funds at the end of the fiscal year. The idea is to reduce the contribution for the 2023, 23, 24 fiscal year to $150,000 each. Originally, you were at just over $194,000, which would have been due for this upcoming fiscal year. But they're proposing that we take that down to $150,000 each, and then we operate to spend down that fund balance over the course of this next fiscal year. So that would reset that, and then establish parameters for annual funding for 2024, 25, and subsequent years. This addendum also adjusts the annual increase that's taken from that Consumer Price Index rate increase to a fixed 3% annual increase. And that's going to be based off the previous year's calculated funding amount before reductions. And then in, an addition of those reporting requirements that I covered early on. So they're looking for financials, which is produced every month. Our finance team does a nice job of getting us our financials and where we're at. And so we'll provide those to the county on a quarterly basis. I'll also put together a quarterly written report for the county commissioners to review. We do have representation from Ron Schmidt. He attends the various meetings that I report to throughout the month. But there, I think there was a desire to see a more comprehensive reporting that they could all look at at the same time and have discussion. And then they are also looking for notification when our annual audit is complete. So we'll be providing that as well. I would take any questions from you.
Thank you, Candace. So the Madison County officials have agreed to and signed the agreement before, the proposal before us in terms of the new agreement, correct?
Yes. They made a motion to approve this agreement. That's before you, and I believe they're working to get signatures.
Yep. Okay, great, got it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Candace. Any other discussion or input? Okay. I do want to say, sometimes economic development work is easily unheralded or overlooked, because it's hard to show exactly what goes into all of the things involved in recruiting, development, infrastructure readiness, all of those things. But I do think we have a very committed economic development staff that works creatively on behalf of citizens about the city and the county to position our community and our area for economic growth, which will help retain youth and attract newcomers, which is what it's all about. So thank you for your work.
If no... I would just like to add a, add a comment, too. I think Candace did a nice job. I see the county commissioners here as well. And just nice to see the county and the city working together on this economic development.
Good partnership. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 41, we'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5846, amending section 2-5 of the city code to update building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permit fees, and to update water, sewer, and wastewater rates. This ordinance has an operative date of October 1, 2023.
I'll offer consideration of ordinance 5846.
Okay. Motion in a second. For some background on this, I think we'll hear from a combination of Steve Ramus and Val Grimes. Whoever wants to go first?
I'll go first. It's been a while since I've talked. So yes, this is our annual fee schedule coming up since our fiscal year starts October 1st. We've been trying to slowly raise our permits to get them more into line with what other people in our kind of comparable cities are doing. Because prior to the last few years, I think it'd probably been eight or 10 years since we had raised fees. This year, we're estimating about 3% or less, or a penny or a fraction thereof, if it's kind of like a square footage. So we might have gone from 17 cents a square foot to 18 cents a square foot, or something along those lines. So that is what we would be proposing. We do have kind of a comparison chart, and for, we just kind of take a standard kind of residential house and a standard commercial house and kind of run, or commercial building, and run those, and then take an average. For a new residential build, we're about $110 still less than the average of everybody else put together for total. And for commercial, we're probably about $1,500 or less, probably, on average, from what we charge to what the average of the other cities charge, if that's helpful. That would be the, with the proposed. Correct.
What were those numbers again, Val? $150 for residential and $1,500?
Yeah, about $110 for residential. And it's about $2,800 to $4,300 is the difference, so about that $1,500 in commercial.
That's a comparison of peer cities?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any more, any further background on this?
Are you looking to me to start talking about water and sewer?
I think so. Some questions were coming, I think, in terms of water, sewer, wastewater rates.
I'll start, I'll start with the water rates. The proposed water rate increase across all the meter charges and water use charges are budgeted at 6%. Historically, just to give you an idea on historically, we don't necessarily always try and target the same, although they, they're very similar as you look back year over year. Our water rates generally run between the range of about 2%, 2.5% upwards, of about 4.5% over the last 30 years. We've had a couple of water rates that have run up into high, high single digits. 2009, we actually had a 10% increase at that time. Over the last 30 years, our running average is about 2.75% a year. The 6% this year is due to our, we have two, two large projects out there. Our 2 million gallon storage tank out at the West Water Plant, and another production well, well 14. The existing storage tank was built about 50 years ago, and we have, we're starting to push the capacity on that with the operation. It has a fairly significant, it's a significant part of our operation in terms of the backwash of our filters out at the plant, as well as just general water storage. And so, again, being 50 years into the life of that one, that one is still in good shape. We just need additional capacity and additional backwash capacity at the plant. Likewise, as we look forward at community growth, we need another production well in there. They, we're in design stage right now for about another 3.5 million gallon production well, which would basically terminate the capacity of our existing well field out there, kind of south, south of the existing plant, south of Walmart area, or southwest of Walmart area. It, again, it is, as we continue to grow in the water world, in public works world, between water and sewer, street, solid waste, we, we try to be proactive, specifically in our water and sewer environment. We've all heard the stories over the last half a dozen years about water problems, water pipe problems, lead line problems. There's, you know, there's a lot of issues that can develop in your water system if you're just not proactive in dealing with what's coming down the pike in terms of new regulation, and just in terms of meeting the demand of your community as you grow. So we are proposing, or we have budgeted for a 6% increase. Again, that's roughly twice what our 30-year running average is. So roughly 3% of that is, is just general operation, and about 3% of that is for the 2 million gallon tank and the well field expansion. Any questions for me on that one?
Is this 6%? Is that a permanent increase, or would it just have, would it have a timeframe on it?
It would have, it would be a permanent increase in the rate structure. So as we would look, as we would implement this, and then as we go forward into the future, we would adjust. Again, you know, I can't commit to what next year might be or the following year might be. But once we capture enough to pay for that bond, then yes, you know, we, we had, we're not going to be doing 6% and 6%, 6%. We could go down to 2%, 2.5% in upcoming years. So, and I think the history of our water rates show that. We, we increased that rate, again, just to read off a couple. 1995, we had 7.8%, and then we came back down to 2.4, 2.3, 3.4, 2.2. In 2009, we had a 10-point, it looks like about a 10.3% increase in water rates. After that, there were three years of 0%, then we had an 8.5%. So, you know, they, they kind of go up and down. Those higher increases represent projects that occurred back in those timeframes. And so we, we had to push that up there to capture enough to pay for the bond for those projects.
Sounds, thank you. I know well 14 and that storage tank are certainly needed out there. Is that storage tank tied to the water rates or the sewer rates?
The storage tank is part of our water rates.
As, as Val pointed to some comparisons of where we're at with permit fees, do we have an idea of comparisons with water fees with, with peer communities?
We are a little bit north of middle of the range. As we generally look at our five peer communities, our first-class cities, we are north of mid-range. We are not the high. I don't believe we're the second high, but we're north of the middle of the average. And it also depends a little bit just on how much you use. If you're a non-irrigator, you don't sprinkle your yard, you fall in a different, you're towards the, you're probably under mid-range. If you're a heavy sprinkler, you've got a swimming pool, you're going to be, you're going to be in the upper end of our five peers.
One more question, Steve. So is this 6% straight across the board for residential and commercial?
It is. It's against, it's against all of our water rates.
Steve, are both these projects something that had to happen right now, or they, I mean, are they...
I would say yes. We would, we would start to fall behind the curve. You know, there's also regulations out there. We're in about year five now of a drought. We know that's going to continue. We don't know what kind of questions might be coming up through NRD or other regulatory agencies out there that, that have an interest in water and water wells. So just to be ahead of the curve and be able to meet our, our growth demand, I would say this is a significant priority.
Are those determinations made primarily on water, water quantity issues? Or is there some water quality components taken into account as well?
Generally, it's, it's water capacity, how much, how much our need... Generally, it's, it's water capacity, how much, how much our need is. The water quality is more related to our different types of treatment, or how we might treat that water that's coming out of the ground. Generally, we don't see the regulations moving too much on that. We are certainly watching the conversation around PFOS. We're watching the conversation around arsenic, and anticipate that over the next 10 years, both of those could become regulated, so.
Thank you. Steve, there's quite a bit of difference in this, where this well is set in place compared to the other wells, correct? As far as how it leaches out, gets, brings water in? As far as with the Oglala and whatnot?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I missed a question.
I was in the, I was in the subcommittee. Yeah. What's that? Yeah, how that well works.
It's a, okay, it's a production well, so it's, the well itself is about 15 feet in diameter. It's a, basically a 15-foot concrete pipe that goes down to just about bedrock, and then around 15 feet above the bottom, there are horizontal wells that go out. There's five or six horizontal wells that would go out there, and they're about, I don't know, 13, 14 inches in diameter. So that's the actual vein that goes out that, that captures the water. So they're, they're called production wells because they're high-capacity wells. Anything else on that one?
Steve, are you talking, so, I'm just looking at the enclosure here, so, per 100 cubic feet, they pay a buck 21 right now? Or a buck 14? They go to a buck 21, so roughly a seven cent?
It, it's around 6%. Obviously, there's, at, at these low-dollar levels, we do some rounding to the nearest cent, and so it might be 5.77, or, or it could be 6.02, or, where, where, which one are you at? You want to?
Enclosure 41, page 345.
Yeah. Which water rate are you looking at?
For water usage rate per 100 cubic feet for water usage over, it's a buck 14, and chose to go to a buck 21.
Gotcha. So it's going to go up seven cents on the dollar 14?
I don't know.
Yeah, so it's, it's a hair over 6%, about 6.1%.
So on the water rate, you're talking 6%, 6 cents increase over?
6%, yeah, so 100, if, if your water bill's $100 a month, right, or a bi-monthly right now, it'd be 106 bi-monthly. If it's $50 bi-monthly, right now, it'd be $53 bi-monthly.
Any other questions?
You want to move on to sewer? For the sewer rates, there's two rates, two general rates here. We have the residential rates, and then we have our commercial rates. Both are programmed into the budget at 8%. And I'll give a little bit of history as well on, on these rate increases. For our residential rates, over the last 30 years, our average is 3.7%. Again, those rates go up and down depending on projects. 1995, it was 12.55, 1996, 11.3, 1999, 10, 2008, 10. After those years, it tends to drop back down. '09, it was 7%. 2010, it was 5.3%. So it, it fluctuates up and down. The back, so the history of why we're sitting at 8% right now, it, it does have to do with the conversation on that Omaha lift station back here. I can't remember exactly, it was April, May-ish. We'd had a conversation with subcommittee. I know there were some residents that are directly upstream of the existing lift station that have experienced some backup of the sewer system as a result of some of our flood And the lift station was part of a large study of the northeast side of the community and just the general growth of, of the nor, what we would call the northeast basin. That was done by Kirk and Michael, I think, back in 2012, 2013. They came up with some, a three-phased approach. Number, phase one was taking Woodland Park and putting in a surge pond up there, which was done around 2015. We, we also increased the size of the pumping units there at the lift station on, on Highway 35. Phase two would be as, as demand grew on the east side of the community, we would upsize the pumps at that Highway 35 lift station. In the report, it's referred to as the 275, Highway 275 lift station. And then ultimately, as, as the east side of the community grew, phase three would be the Omaha lift station. And at the time, if we go back there, a project we really don't like to refer to, but it's that old pipe plant. We did move forward back there. We got the plans prepared in case, just in case that, that facility did come to be. It did not come to be, and so we put the 90% plans on the shelf, and we've just been pushing those 90% plans, hoping that we might see some industry come in that could cost-share in that. In the meantime, that project is growing, just from an inflationary perspective, it's gone from about a $5.5 million project to somewhere around $9 million, $9.5 million now. And so, you know, as, as we are concerned about rates, and we do want to control that, and it's still desirous that, you know, if we could see some industry come in to cost-share on that, you know, if they could do a 50% cost-share today, you know, we're looking at $4.5 to $5 million to cost-share that project today with, with industry, whereas we could have put it in the ground for $5.5 million in 2015, 2016. So, you know, as, as we work with elected officials, as we keep our eye on that project, as we keep our eye on community growth, community needs, one of the conversations that came up was, do we pull the trigger and, and just fix our cost and get that in the ground so it doesn't continue to escalate? If we did that, it would add capacity to that east side. It would also add capacity to the west, the sewer system, collection system on the west side of the flood control, because it would take all that stuff right now, and that lift station at Highway 35 is pumped over, I think on Park Avenue, and goes into a, a lift station over there. So if we put in the Omaha lift station and, and take that burden off of the Park Avenue lift station, it increases our capacity to, to grow to the northwest side of the community as well. So when we presented all that to subcommittee here back in, in May, they said, yeah, let's, let's, let's go ahead and, and move this forward from a budgeting perspective. So we did that. It is, it is in the CIP, it is in our budget documents. The 8% rate increase then would have, we looked at, you know, needing about 3, 3% just to fund the operation, and another 5% kicking us to 8%, and we would need that for three years to fund that project. Subsequent to that May conversation, as we got into June, July, there's, there were other conversations with elected officials about looking at, making sure that that's the right option. I think Jim had come and presented some questions as well at a, at an open council meeting, asking if, if that was, you know, are we sure that's the right decision? And I, I think council heard that, you know, certainly staff heard that, and we did have those conversations. And so currently, the plan is to come back to council here in late September, present in a, in a public venue, our water master plans, sewer master plans, so that, you know, those documents can be consumed by the community and understood by the community. In addition to that, one of the questions was, is there, is there a cheaper option to fix the problem here that we have with three or four homes directly north of that lift station? And there could be. You know, we are, we are looking at, can we put in 4-inch, 8-inch gate valves on solenoids, connect them to our SCADA system? When the alarms go off at, at, at that lift station, you know, our SCADA system would send a, send an alarm and, and either automatically close those valves, or, or staff would close those. But those are all really good options to solve that issue. And that is a separate issue from community growth and development on the east side of the community. So, yes, we do have an 8% in here across our industrial rates, as, as well as our, our residential rates, to the extent that, you know, it doesn't, I don't believe we're necessarily done exploring, are we wanting to move forward with the lift station or not? You know, that could be cut back, I think, if you wanted to consider a 3% rate increase. You know, we could talk about an amendment here for that. On the industrial side, though, I would want to, you'll see there's other rates down there. Specifically, they start, they start talking about wastewater treatment, charge per million gallons, wastewater treatment, biochemical oxygen demand, total suspended solids, our nitrogen. I would ask that those would stay at 8%. We have not had an increase there for a couple of years. Generally, if we look back at rate increases, our BOD averages about 5.6% on an annual basis. Our TSS averages about 6.2% on an annual basis, and our nitrogen averages about 6.2%. So, again, we have not had a rate increase there for a few years, and so we are, we are wanting to see that 8% increase there. I do not have, you know, industry probably here, but I would be very confident to say industry would not be objective to that, to that 8% increase on those industrial charges.
As before, do we have comparisons at, with current rates, both residential and commercial with peer communities?
Current, currently on our residential wastewater charge, we are of our, again, if I look at our five peer cities, Columbus, Carney, Columbus, Carney.
Fremont.
Fremont, and.
Hastings.
Hastings, and then so, I think I might have North Platte in there as well. But we are the second lowest in our peer communities. Would the 8% would move us to the, directly in the middle, we would be right in the middle. We'd be, have two, two communities higher than us, and two of those communities lower than us. But, so we are, you know, again, we are the second lowest right now in, in those five. So again, if, you know, I certainly recognize, and, and we've been working with, with council on this, and, and there is certainly an opportunity if, if we, if we're, you know, it's going to be nine months before we would be ready to move a project forward, and so we would be well into the next budget cycle on that, you know, to be able to talk about the lift station, and if that's, if now is the right time for that, so.
I've got one, just real quickly, just to go on record. I really feel like we need to break these three budgets up from being voted on rates on the same budget, because you've got, we've got three different departments with three separate budgets, and we're voting to approve all rate increases on one vote. Basically, kind of, if you, so if you are in disagreement with one of them, you know what I'm saying, then, then you, you're basically a no vote, and you're.
And, and I guess.
It would be a lot easier to look at things like that.
Yeah. So relative to that, we have laid out a, a process here where we're going to, and I wouldn't be opposed to holding on the rate increases for water and sewer, although this, I mean, the water ones, we know we have an active project, but we would like to present at a subcommittee in October, present water, maybe water and sewer, or, you know, present another one to subcommittee in November, another one in, in December. And allow, allow you to have about a month in between each of, each of my departments within Public Works to digest that, and then probably come back in a December, January, or January, February timeframe then for, you know, a, a Public Works request for fee increase.
And now we'll be leaving the rates, I'd like the current rates to not today? Do you have any recent rates? Do you have any recent rates? I'm just trying to.
If, if, I, I would not be opposed to that, you know, again, with the water project in design and, and probably needing to move that forward this fall, still going out for bids and bringing bids in, we're not going to see a lot of construction until next spring. But, you know, I, I did hear that comment as we were going through the budget system last year. We did have a conversation with staff this year about spreading those things out. I, I don't know if, other, you know, Danny or Randy has other thoughts in terms of changing direction on what you're seeing here, but.
I feel it's important that we do see that study on this on lift station.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And again, that's why I'm saying on the, on this, on the wastewater, I wouldn't be opposed to amending this to a 3%, and I could give you the actual numbers for a 3% increase. But on the industrial side, I, I feel it's, is important that we leave that at the 8% and move that forward. Just to give you an idea, if we were to do a 3% increase, the residential and commercial wastewater would go from $30.44 to $31.35. The additional charge for $100 cubic feet of wastewater, over 400 cubic feet, would go from $2.60 to $2.67. So that would be a 3% increase versus the 8.
So, could we just separate the permit fees from the rates in this case? I mean, to me, the building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, permit fees kind of makes sense to be grouped together, but water, sewer, wastewater, we want to, we really want to have them together.
I think all, I would think almost all. I would think all three need to be separate because they're all individual, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
And then so bring forward a water proposal, then a sewer proposal, but, but pull those three from this particular.
I'm not opposed to that, Councilman.
Would that be a, a motion to do that, and then, can you do that tonight, or is that a table?
Can we approve the building permits if I remove those rates, Danny?
So am I, am I understanding correctly that we would be striking every, every change currently proposed on pages 23, 24, 25, and 26?
Correct, we'd be pulling, we would hold water, wastewater and water rates at their current rates until we would come back with a, another proposal independently for water and sewer.
Understood.
Or usage.
Best way to go about doing that would just would, I would, would be a motion to amend, beginning on page 23, to strike all amendments currently highlighted in yellow from the water and the wastewater. From those sections, 23, 24, 25, and 26, those pages, something along those lines, get us there.
Okay. A, a couple of questions on that, then. If, are, are these discussions, they, they've been grouped together historically, do the, do they correlate to each other in terms of, it seems like we're awful cheap on the permit fee side, middle, low, or middle of the pack, or sometimes ahead of middle of the pack on the rate side. Is there any worthwhile discussion on adjusting some of those permit fees upward to mitigate rate increases? Is that, is, is that within the realm of possibility?
Are you referring to building and codes permit fees?
Yes, yeah.
Two different.
I mean, but they're, they're packaged together for some reason.
Yeah, that's why they can't, they need to be unpackaged, because if you raise her, what she's, what their valve's charging, and they can't, you can't put that in the sewer funds, and you can't put water funds in sewer funds, they all, it's all separate.
Yeah. I mean, I certainly recognize packaging these up makes it more difficult for you to pass one, per se, and, and hold another for, for other conversations, so.
Correct.
But I think that's really Val and probably Randy over there to talk about unpackaging them.
Outside of all that, is that even a discussion worth having? Is it possible to supplement some of those utility rates with, with permit fees that are more in line with the market average? average?
Val's permit fees would go on the general fund versus the water and sewer fees going in the water fund. So I don't think we could supplement one with the other, if that's the question.
So then, wouldn't it make sense to separate them, then?
Yeah, they are separate, then.
You can definitely separate them. That would be fine.
The second question, then, Steve, this, this item comes with a note that says the ordinance has an operative, operative date of October 1st, 2023. So delaying a decision on the water, sewer, and wastewater rates, how does that affect timelines within the regular budgetary process?
I think the only thing that it really has an impact on is our billing department making those rate changes. And so, you know, I think, I'd have to ask Randy. Randy would need to answer that. But I do not believe, you know, if we were to make that change today and just commit to come back for other rate changes, you know, maybe October, November, December, however we would structure that, I don't believe that's an issue. But Randy would need to talk.
No, it's not.
Okay. So we would need, yeah. So if we're just going to strike the rates on those pages per Danny's comment, you know, and just leave water and sewer rates as is, I think the, unless you wanted to not pass the building, the permit rates as well, and have more conversation on those. Is that what I'm hearing, Mayor?
My question was compelled by the potential interconnection of those things and whether it made sense to talk about them together. And I don't know, fiscally, it sounds like it's not possible, so it's a moot point. So I was just finding what, potential other ways to help mitigate the utility rate increases by adjusting what appears to be a very low permit fee schedule on those things.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't, I don't have a lot of permits on, on the water, sewer side. The permits are really on Danny's, or Danny's, on Val's side.
Yeah, like you said, it's, it's general fund versus enterprise funds, I suppose. So I don't know that raising mine would, would help offset those fees.
Okay.
So, so what's, so recommendation tonight would be to table everything, so we can come back with our next agenda that states the fees separate, all fees are separate, and then we can talk about.
You're in a position to.
Is that where we're at? I don't know.
Yeah, there's, there's certainly three ways we can do this. You could table it, or you can amend it, kind of in accordance with what we were discussing earlier, and just removing the, the water and the wastewater aspects, or you can, you can vote it down, and then we come back to something else.
I, it seems a little bit murky. I mean, my, just my perspective would be to table the whole thing, and maybe have some discussion on those permit fees, too. That, that seems like a worthy discussion to have.
The problem with tabling is that that thing, working, is going to come back.
Right, I, I, right.
Right.
If, it sounds like we want to pull the water and sewer rates out and have different, different ordinances or.
Or you can table and just never bring it back. You just bring in different ordinance. So, it's six of one, half dozen of another, I think.
Just, though, Steve, just to keep good order with the sewer and wastewater rates, we were going to have a consultant come and speak to the council on our system.
That's correct. That is correct.
So it would be nice if we had that in correlation before we vote on rates.
Yeah. And Steve referenced that in the late Octo, late September, October, early October timeframe.
Yeah. You know, there's, again, there's, yes, you know, so we, we have a rate increases that just for general operation, and then there's the rate increases that talk about our, our master plans and facilities and, and projects and needs. And so I was thinking, you know, could we just pass the 3% in terms of general operation needs and then come back for conversation? But yes, the intent is, as we go forward here, we want to have a conversation about our rates structure, so that you can understand our rate model, understand the projects that are behind our rate model, the operations behind that rate model. So, again, I, I am not opposed, you know, to tabling that, whether they come back together, separate. I see them coming back probably as separate.
Yeah.
We would bring you a water rate agenda item, a sewer rate agenda item. I think that makes.
It's cleaner.
Yeah, definitely.
Table it or amend it?
Table.
Steve, I've got one question before we table or amend this.
Table ordinance number 50.
Frank, just a second.
Hold on.
So I got, I got one question about the, this, the sewer rates.
Was there? Did you hear one?
No. The sewer rates are reflective of the usage of your water rates, correct?
That is correct. It's reflective of the usage of water, not the usage rate.
I'm, I'm sorry, the, the, yes, the, the usage of, of a particular commercial or residential property.
That's correct. The more gallons you send us to treat, the, the more you pay.
Right. So wouldn't we have the, so, so wouldn't, as we go, as this conversation is taking place, wouldn't you update the water and sewer rates in one, and wastewater would be a separate?
Yes.
So we're not talking about putting three separate in front of us. We're talking about putting two separate rates in front of us, or percentage raise in fees in front of us, correct?
You'd have a water rate agenda item and a sewer rate agenda item.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you're saying, in effect, the water and wastewater rates are.
Wastewater and sewer are reflective of each other.
Correct, but they both have.
Wastewater and sewer is one, one thing. Our sewer fees.
Would be wastewater and sewer.
Our sewer fees are how we, that's where we collect the money to operate our wastewater plant.
So if we could technically, yeah, then we, we, both, both have their own budget, both have different rates. They both need to split apart, make it a lot easier to discuss about, so.
And then as we bring that forward, is what Councilman Webb said, is that we would have a consultant here of the study that has been reflected, so.
Right. So we do, you know, we do 20-year master plans on our sewer and water, and, I think it's important that those are presented in a public, public forum where you can digest those, and those are explained to you through our, our consultants that develop those and through staff. The community can di, can see those and hear that conversation. I, I think that's important, you know, it's, I don't know how else we make decisions if we don't understand what's in those documents.
Right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I would like to table ordinance number 5846.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to table, and I don't think there's any discussion allowed on that, so I would ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5846 is placed on the table.
All right. And believe it or not, that is the end of the agenda. We are adjourned.